Let's call this meeting to order. Mr. Treasurer, could you take role?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, we're very pleased and honored tonight to have our Air Force General ROTC cadets present the colors. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance after the colors are posted? Color guard, post!
Colors, hut. Forward, arms. Forward, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, arms. Color turn, march.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause.
All right, that brings us to district goals. Every meeting, we always discuss our goals. Our first is student achievement, that's our number one goal. And our second goal is financial prudence. And our third goal is community involvement. So we balance all three of those things with every decision we make on this board, and we stay true to those goals. And I think we've done a fairly decent job, but we can always do better, so we're going to keep our pencils sharpened and keep working at it. So, thank you. That brings us to recognition. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. We do have one recognition, and I'd like to have our athletic director, Andy Jawan, come to the podium to present it. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Raiba, Mr. Anagostu, and members of the school board. It is an honor to be here tonight to recognize one of our student athletes for their excellence in athletics and superior achievement from this past fall. Before I introduce Coach Church, I would like to take this opportunity, as we gather here tonight in the heart of our beautifully renovated high school, to thank the Strongsville community and this school board for their commitment to improving our facilities here at the high school and across our district. On behalf of all of our student athletes and coaches, we thank you, and we strive to make the best use of our opportunities every day on this campus to represent our community and this school with pride and integrity. Tonight, we turn the spotlight to our girls soccer program, a program that continues to exemplify what it means to represent the Mustangs not only in this city, in northeast Ohio, and even across the country. This year, our girls soccer team finished with a record of eighteen, one, and one, and amazingly, in twelve of those contests, the girls did not even give up a single goal. This year's team finished, excuse me, as the OHSA district champions, the Greater Cleveland Conference co-champions, and ended the season as the number one ranked team in the entire state of Ohio. It's no accident that our team is led by, in my opinion, the best coach in the state of Ohio, a coach who works tirelessly in-season and out, a model of consistency to a group of dedicated and committed soccer players. To tell us more about one of those student athletes and her achievement this year, it is my privilege to bring Coach Todd Church to the podium. Coach Church?
Thank you, Mr. Jawan, for a very nice introduction, and thank you to Mr. Raiba, Mr. Anagostu, Mr. Nasa, and the rest of the board for taking time to have us here tonight. I get the pleasure tonight of introducing you to Lauren Rakidiak. Lauren, why don't you come on up? Come on up. You're the one we're here to see. This past January, Lauren was recognized by the National Skolastic Soccer Coaches Association of America as an All-American. She's the 12th All-American that we've had in our program, and only the second underclassman. She's a rising senior this year. She joined the list of fifty-five other girls, and when you consider that roughly four-hundred-thousand girls play high school soccer, that's a pretty exclusive list. She had a tremendous year last year, as Mr. Jawan indicated. We had a very good year, in large part due to her efforts. She had twenty-three goals, which put her up with our leaders all-time, and that list is a pretty exclusive list as well. She scored against Ohio State finalist Springbrough. She scored against New Mexico State finalist St. Pius X. She scored against California national power Maria Carrillo. Only one school scored more than one goal on Medina, that was us, and Lauren had both of them. She had just a phenomenal year, and that's what led us to where we were. And I think what really sets her apart, though, are two things. She really embodies our value of merit. She has earned everything she's gotten, and she continues to do so. It wasn't long after this season, she was right back at work getting ready for next year, and I really appreciate that. A lot of us like to be on top, but few appreciate the climb, and she appreciates the climb. And I appreciate that, I think that's fantastic. She also serves our community very, very well. She pays it forward to our program all the time. She's training a couple of young girls right now, training some future Lady Mustangs, and she serves in DECA, she serves in FCA, she's a Mustang mentor, a dare role model, just a very, very class act. So I have the pleasure tonight of presenting to you Lauren Rakidiak.
I just wanted to start it off by thanking the school board for this, this is amazing. This was the best year of my life, and I really want to thank my coaches for supporting me endlessly, and my family. I have the best parents over there. They have their phones out, they're very, very excited, so I just want to thank them. And my teammates were incredible, they've supported me through everything. And every single person that I've run into that has heard about this has been so amazing towards me, and flying out to LA was the best experience of my life because it's such an honor. And to be recognized tonight is an honor for myself and my family, so I really want to thank everyone for that. I also want to thank the Strongsville soccer program, who has been a huge influence in the player I became today because they started training me when I was very, very young. I've gone to all the camps, and I wouldn't be the same player I am without any of them. And I cannot wait to see what next season brings, and I'm happy to have one more year here as a Strongsville Lady Mustang, so thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good eye, great lady.
Thank you. I got a challenge for you coming up this morning.
It's not soccer.
Lauren, as I told you when we talked right before the meeting, we're so proud of you, proud of what you've accomplished, proud of how you represent yourself in our district. And, you know, I played soccer a lot of years ago, it was Pee-wee soccer, but we've got... I was the Rookie of the Year, I was the only Rookie of the Year, so that was how I won that great honor. But you look at, you know, Mr. Anagostu, Mr. Trejillo, and Mrs. Green, three of our administrative team members, they've had a great career at soccer, and I know that they truly know what an accomplishment it is for you to reach this level. And here's to your senior year, right? Another great year. Thank you.
Congratulations, I mean, outstanding. I'm sure, I know how proud you are of your daughter. We're almost as proud, and we're just thrilled to death. But I just want to, I wanted to take this opportunity to just say a few words on our commitment to excellence in athletics. So right now, you know, we're in the process, we, I know, I know that we have the exemplary students, we've got the student athletes to deliver in all sports. There's no question about it, you see the strength of the kids in Strongsville, you see the kids, you see the quality, you see the dedication, you see all that in there. We, as a board, and as administration, and as a community, have, we are determined, and we are upgrading all of our facilities, right? So we turfed two fields last year. We're in the process of rebuilding our weight room, that's all on order, that'll be first of April, somewhere right around there, that's all going to be ready to go, right? So we're committed to that, and thank God for the commitment from our community to help us do that, because that's all through donations, right? We raised a million six or so in about four months with the help of this community, we raised more to do the weight room, more to do the flag at the stadium, we did all of that. So now we're moving on to the coaches, and as we, as we know right now, we're in the search for a new football coach, right? We've got some great candidates for that, but I want, I'm challenging all the coaches, I mean, and that's what I want to talk to you, Mr. Church, when we get a new football coach, the standard is you, the standard is you and Mr. Felton, that's the standard. If they aren't, if a coach in this, in Strongsville City Schools, isn't as committed as you are to working it from the ground up, like you said, you, all the camps when you were a little girl, and I know that, Mr. Church, I could ask you George Grozan's daughter's name, and you'll tell me is her name, because that's how you are, and that's what we need. And if you're a coach in this district, and that's not how you are, then we don't need you, and we're going to weed you out. And you're either going to be committed and dedicated to this process of winning, and I felt bad for those boys last year on the football team, right? Two and eight, no Strongsville team should ever go two and eight again, right? And so we're going to rebuild that program from the ground up, and as soon as our new coach gets here, the first date he's got is with Mr. Church and Mr. Felton, and you're going to tell them what's expected. And then we're going to, as a board, we're going to hold them accountable. Next year, and every time when we see the fall coaches, when you see their names up here and it says head coach, there's going to be an application behind it, and it's going to say, what's your record for the last five years? How many scholarships did your kids get? What's your participation? Is it going up or down? What's your philosophy on coaching? How committed are you? How are you going to build from the bottom up and from the top down? So all those things are going to start happening around here, and we're going to get this thing going. I'm really thrilled about it. I mean, the soccer program, the swimming program, the track program, we've got some programs out there that are just stellar, and we're going to, we're going to work and we're going to use those as the models to build off of that. So I'm really excited about where we're going and what we're going to do, and Andy's going to help us, he's back there. So I think I'm excited, I get a little worked up in this stuff, because I love ass.
Tell us how you really feel.
I'm already sweating like I'm wrestling again, but...
I'm going to just, I want to say thank you. I want to say first thank you, Lauren. You know, you and your family had choices, right? There were a lot of other opportunities in other schools, and you decided to stay here at Strongsville. You know, and I think there's a lot that had to go into that decision, coaching, the environment, the school, the community, so thank you for staying with Strongsville. Thank you for being an amazing student and a model to, to not just your teammates, but to the younger girls who get that opportunity to come out and play with you. I mean, my daughter, and everybody knows she plays soccer, my little seven-year-old goes on Sundays and, you know, does skills with you guys. She already knows Coach Todd and Coach Nick, and she already knows those names. So that's from the ground up, you're growing, but also the way that you give back. So thank you for being that great student, thank you for being that great example, and next year, as a senior, you're going to have to be that great leader, right? You're going to have to be one of those kids who are going to push the rest of them. So thank you to you, your parents, who had to drag you around all over the place, right?
Thank you for choosing Strongsville.
Yeah, and then thanks for the coaches. You know, you guys put a lot of time and effort into this, and a lot of heart, and we appreciate it. So thank you, guys.
All right. Lauren and your family, you're more than welcome to stay, but this is the time where you scooch out if you're...
As we get into the other exciting business of the board.
Thank you for being here, coaches, thank you for being here as well. What I have under the superintendent's report for the community tonight is, as we've done, is we've got a lot of action steps that we're working on as a district in our Strong Schools 2020 Plan. As Lauren has demonstrated what it takes to be a premier athlete in our district, we work on a district level to what it means to be, to have a premier education, whether it's in arts, academics, or athletics. And a part of that is initiative that we've had this year in growing our student achievement and growth, which is the development of building instructional plans. And what I wanted to do this evening is to share with you an update as to where we're at with that action step, where we're going to look in adding up by the end of the sixteen-seventeen school year, and how we're going to measure it throughout the, throughout the year. So what we have, what we've done is this summer, this past summer, we sat down and we looked at our spring 2016 testing data, and as Erin shared earlier in one of her presentations, we saw two themes that were glaring. The first was, across the district, we saw we had performance concerns with how our kids were performing on the state assessments in English Language Arts. Secondly, we saw gaps in achievement levels between all of our students that took the test and our subgroups. And the subgroups that we talked about are listed there, our students that are learning the English language as a second language, our students with disabilities, our students that are economically disadvantaged, and our African-American students, were not performing to the same level as all of our students were performing. So we brought that out into our administrative team and said, here are the themes that we're seeing across the district. Now, we want you to go through not only what we're seeing as a district, but what are you seeing as your building? How are you seeing these issues portrayed at Kinzner or Maraski or the middle school or high school? And they were charged with developing a specific year-long plan to get, to make the necessary improvements at the building level. So as a district, the past few years, what we've done is we've said, buildings, you need to do X, Y, and Z to move to the next level. We've done a lot of work over those years, and now what we're saying to them is, here are the themes, you need to decide what works best for your building. You need to look as it says, what are the challenges, the needs, and the successes, and you need to work with your leadership team at the building level to develop a plan that's going to move your building forward. So they've worked on that, and we have this action step in our Strong Schools 2020 Plan that says, not only do they have to develop the plan at the building level, but they're going to meet with us quarterly, and by us, I mean Erin, and Andy, and Jenny, and Vicky, and me, to do progress checks and help support and give feedback as to where they're at, and are they on track to make the progress needed by the end of the year. So we have two evaluation criteria that we set at the beginning of the year. First, you're going to develop your plan, you're going to have an overall objective and some action steps and evaluation criteria, and we're going to measure the success of that plan as to whether or not you hit that evaluation criteria. But as a district, we're also going to look at some other measures to see where each of our buildings are at and where we're at as a district. We talk a lot about being a premier district in the region and the state, and so our target this year is to be in the top sixteen percent, not only of the state, which we've been, but in Cuyahoga County, which is a little more competitive than the state. We have through ODE, twenty similar school districts that they rank to Strongsville. We are saying that we want to be in the top ten of those twenty similar districts, and then working on increasing our passage rate of all the English Language Arts assessments, which those are grades three through ten, by four percent, or achieving the state minimum or the state established performance target. And then secondly, we do give common assessments throughout the school year to our students and set the criteria for students to achieve at or above expectations, and we'll be looking at that as well. So that's the data that I'll be able to report back to the board in June to share how we hit the full evaluation criteria. So each building has had to develop a plan, and I didn't want to get into the minutia of what all the action steps, but I did want to give you just an overarching idea of what they're working on. So as you could see, the high school is targeting increasing performance in English Language Arts nine and ten, which are the end-of-course exams that they give at the high school. But the high school was also concerned with the performance of students in Algebra I and Geometry. So we did give the buildings that flexibility, that even though it's English Language Arts and subgroups, if you see a need in another area that you feel you could, you want to work on, you can, and they did that. One of the things that they're also focused on is, in the standards, there's a big focus on integrating English Language Arts into non-ELA courses. So how are we building our reading and writing skills in science and social studies and music in our tech courses? So that's a, that's a focus of the high school. As we move to the middle school, what they wanted to do is to build the capacity of their teachers to truly analyze and understand the data to inform their instruction, and then develop systematic interventions for students that have identified needs in English Language Arts and Math. So how do we build capacity to know what we should work on, and then specifically targeting those students that need the most support? As we talked about focusing on our subgroups, number two at the middle school is specifically focusing on those subgroups. At Chapman, they're working on building teacher capacity in terms of effective instructional strategies, and also kind of similar to the middle school, improving instruction and intervention in English Language Arts, focusing on the writing process. So Chapman, they have a writing, a building goal for writing, they're focused on use of graphic organizers and use of writing rubrics, so there's consistency throughout the building on that process to give a cohesive focus for writing. At Kinzner, Mr. Marino is really focusing his efforts on two things. First of all, building teacher leadership and collaborative structures to solve those problems, and then monitoring the effectiveness of those practices put into the classroom. So, you know, what he's taking is he's in a leadership cohort that talks a lot about, if you want to improve student results, you have to change teacher behavior and develop the skills of your teachers. So that's his primary focus at Kinzner this year. Maraski, they're targeting English Language Arts in grades K to five. Maraski has a writing focus as well, so from K to five, they have a building theme and specific targeted strategies that they're working on in writing. Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's rubrics again there, do you remember? Yeah, it is rubrics that they're having consistent writing rubrics and expectations throughout the grade levels. And then again, number two, they are looking at how can we develop a building leadership team to help drive and improve academics throughout the school year. Surrar is focused, again, as we've heard in some of the other buildings, increasing the leadership capacity through the BLT, and then focusing on English Language Arts not only as for all students, but specifically, they saw that students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students were not achieving at the same levels of all students, and so that's been a targeted focus. Sally has decided that fifth grade math was an area that she could not, not focus on this year, so she put that in there, and they have a targeted focus on fifth grade math as well, which was an area of need for that building. Finally, at Whitney, again, K to five ELA is the focus there, and Glenn is, within his subgroup, is identified, students with disabilities as the subgroup that needs the most attention to improve their academic success. The preschool, they give an early, early learning assessment, so they're focusing on student growth at the preschool through the literacy and the language piece of that assessment. And then, just as we've shared in the past, we have a six to twelve English Language Arts adoption this year. We also have a curriculum adoption at the preschool, and so that's a big focus and a ton of work our preschool teachers have done. And they're really looking at a creative new way to present preschool standards that meets the needs of our kids, and is not just a program that you buy, but a program that develops skills based on areas of interest of the kids. So that's a flavor of what the buildings are focused on and have been focused on this year. As we go back to the action step, it's been about, you know, helping support our principals throughout this process. So what we've done is, in August, they had their draft instructional plan, they met with us, the team I mentioned, and we provided feedback to them, we assigned some coaching to them if they needed that support to develop the plan. And then in October, we asked them to come meet with us, and what we said is, pick one example of something that you've accomplished thus far, or something that's in place that you've worked on, and share that evidence related to it, as well as they had to spell out what the next steps were, the timelines for implementing the instructional plan. And again, that was another point for feedback and guidance, so everybody was on the right track so we can get to those desired results at the end of the school year. We just met with them at the end of January, and the end of January meeting was that they had to go through their entire plan, all of the action steps and evaluation criteria, and give us an update as to where they're at and next steps. And the flexibility to say, hey, what you decided in August may not make sense in January, it may need to ebb and flow a little bit, so we did have some opportunities to tweak the plan. We have two more meetings with them, we have one coming up in early April, again, providing evidence, giving them a chance to show where they're at in terms of growth towards their objectives, as well as the overarching evaluation criteria. And then in June, that's going to be the culmination of it all, to see, did we meet the intended outcomes? Are our students moving and progressing as we want them to based on the actions that they've done? And how is this going to influence your plan for next year? So this is not a one-and-done, this is an evolution. ELA is our focus for the next three years, and how are you going to, now that you've started to chip away at some of the roadblocks or struggles that were there, what's next for seventeen, eighteen? How this, not only the outcomes of measuring, are we making progress to where we want to be as a district academically, but because we've given flexibility to have these plans based on building needs, what it's helped us as a district-level administrative team is it's helped to provide coaching to our principals. Like we've talked about over the past few meetings, you know, we believe strongly that we need coaching to help support our teachers, our administrators also need coaching and support in their work, and that's provided targeted and systematic opportunities to do that. It's provided monitoring and feedback. A lot of times in education, especially as an administrator, you know, you have a plan, you share your plan, and then nobody talks to you until the end of the year until you look at the results. Because of these quarterly check-ins and feedback are opportunities, it's given us monitoring opportunities and to help our principals throughout the process. And then I think it's important, and we talked about accountability's not a bad word, it's shared accountability. We're accountable to provide the support that they need to be successful in their building, and they're accountable to the results that are achieved or not achieved at the building level. So, you know, we've talked as an administrative team at the district level quite often, that we feel that this process has developed the leadership skills of our administrative team, it's helped us to better support what they need to reach what they, the goals that they've set, and so it's been an extremely positive process for us altogether. So that's the update that I wanted to share, and didn't know if you had any questions or thoughts or feedback.
Yeah, I have a question. Given that we've seen musical evaluations from the state of Ohio over the last three years, where the tests have changed every year, what do we anticipate, maybe this is more for Erin, what do we anticipate this year from the state of Ohio? And how, you know, like, if they pull the same thing on us that they did last year, where the evaluations were much more, I won't say difficult, but in different areas than we expected, and our grades, our state grades went down because of it, how are we kind of, you know, accommodating for that?
Well, Erin could jump in if she feels I, you know, anything to add or that I missed, but where we feel this year is, the tests are not changing. So we've now stuck, this is the second year, we'll have the air exams, we'll have the end-of-course exams at the high school. So we feel confident in terms of getting one year under our belt, a consistent test. Our teachers, you know, in this process have been reflective and said, you know, based on, when they give the test, they kind of give a roadmap of, here's what's going to be on the test, and here's the weight it's going to be. And so we've had conversations with our teachers to say, hey, based on this, I'll give a practical example, I didn't think probability was going to be heavily covered. The kids took the test, and oh my gosh, probability was a huge portion of the test. So how do we revamp our maps and our pacing guides and order it in a way to ensure that kids are getting exposure to the content that they need that's heavily weighted on these assessments? The state has been clear about the criteria continuing to increase, it's, is it eighty percent next, this year, Erin? We believe that it's eighty percent the criteria is going to go up. So the rules have been pretty outright in terms of what they are, I feel that they're consistent. They've been more upfront with resources. Last year, they barely shared any resources with us about what questions would look like, what tests would look like, how to best prepare. You know, we find a lot that it's not that the kids lack the knowledge, it's, they sometimes lack the way that they display the information, you know, in multiple graphs or charts, or how they worded the question. They've released more information, Erin's done a phenomenal job of sending resources out to our teachers, they've got practice tests that they can work on. You know, we're going for the first year, we're going to completely online testing, so is everybody else across the state. So little things like, we met with our elementary teachers, and we talk about graphic organizers. Well, as a third grader, you have to type your written responses, and you have to type, you know, your reading answers, so you don't have time to make graphic organizers. So we're now transitioning students to how to not, how to do a pre-writing without a graphic organizer. graphic organizer. Aaron talked with our teachers about, you know, when you're reading on the screen, you could either scroll all the way down, or you can have a flip book where it flips for you. So the teachers all decided, and we all decided, we want a flip book. So now teachers are doing their online assessments to practice as a flip book, so students get used to that. So I feel that although I don't agree with all the rules that are out there, the rules have been consistent from last year to this year. We've got a lot more resources. Our teachers are better prepared after one year of experience. So it's not saying it's going to be a challenge, but I think we, we should see some increased success than we did last year because of that. I don't know, Aaron, if there's anything else you wanted to add.
Okay.
I had a question too. All of this analysis was based on last year's test scores, correct?
Correct.
Where we had a Drake Elementary School, and those students now have been absorbed into these other schools. So did that data get attached to that school, or how did you accommodate for those particular students that are not in that Drake Elementary School setting and the teachers got dispersed and everything? So, I mean, I applaud this effort, but I'm just thinking that because of that dynamic of these students being absorbed, it's not going to be a true reflection of how successful this plan is, or is that not right?
Well, there's two things we did. We did, when we did the summer analysis, and we spent a whole day with the principals going through it, we did take our Drake results and share them with where the majority of those students went to. So Sarar and Whitney and Maraski had those results. You know, it's not a perfect science, though, you're right, because of how they culminate the data. So we did that, we shared it with where the students are going. But I would say the other part that's true, Jane, is we also look at, we don't want to make wide sweeping changes with one year of data. We want to start to see some trends. So what we, that's why we took a look and said, you know, whether it's the error test or the park test, we've been seeing for the past few years that our ELA scores are not where they need to be. So it's not so much about the test, or it's not so much about where the kids went, but we saw that as a central theme. How the principals built the plan was also, it was partly on the data, a good part on the data, but it was all about, also about the building needs and the building structure and development of where the teachers were at and where the kids were at. So there was that human piece, I guess you could say, beyond the data to say, here's what the data's saying, and also based on my professionalism and experience, here's where I think we need to focus under that umbrella. Going into year two, I think it's going to, we're going to, I always talk about, we have this funnel, and right now the funnel's a little wide to try and identify the heart of the problem, but we're thinning out the funnel to really become more targeted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Naiso. That's it for my report to the community.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and we don't have any. Approval of the minutes. We have the December eighth, January fifth, and January nineteenth minutes to be approved. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion? George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naiso?
Yes.
Brings us to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Naiso. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being the financial report for the month ending January 31st, 2017. My usual presentation with this, I'm going to go to the podium. Within my report tonight, at the end of it, I also have two updates, one regarding our state audit and our comprehensive annual financial report, then also a few slides on the governor's state budget that I'll touch at the end. So financial report as of January 31st. Our district goals, as we mentioned earlier, this one falls under financial prudence. The next few slides are financial prudence throughout the years that we've had on consistently, and I'll revisit these at the end. So, starting off their general fund summary, I know this slide is small, but it's also in the exhibit, under Exhibit A. So overall, for, as of January 31st, we brought in thirty-nine million dollars, thirty-nine point one million dollars of revenue, and we've had thirty-eight point three million dollars in expenses. Looking at that, overall revenues are slightly less than they were last year at this point, primarily due to seven hundred thousand dollar decrease in our TPP, in our state allocation, which is primarily due to our TPP funding, and it's being offset slightly by, our other revenues are up by a hundred twenty-seven thousand. That's primarily due to the new tech fee that we had this year and kindergarten enrollment that, we had deposits for kindergarten for next year, and we saw slight, we saw an increase in our kindergarten numbers for full-day kindergarten. On the expense side, salaries are slightly less compared to last year. These will catch up as there was one more payroll, payday last year at this point compared to this year. Benefits are slightly down by two hundred thousand, that's a combination of benefits went up. Also, we have less employees that are on our benefits, so those two kind of offset, but overall, we're trending lower compared to last year. And a few other lines, purchase service, material supplies, and capital A, they're slightly up, and it's more due to timing. For these items, the budget really has an increase compared to last year to this year, with the exception of capital A, where we have allocated more funds to technology. Our general fund revenues. Overall, we forecasted, I'm just having a hard time seeing the wall from this angle. Overall, we forecasted seventy-one point five million in revenue. In our five-year forecast, as of January 31st, we received thirty-nine point one million, and we're projecting to receive another thirty-two point five million from February to June. To, our total revenue is seventy-one point six million, which is about a hundred fifty-three thousand more than what was forecasted. See, as of now, our tax revenue, which is our primary highest revenue, is thirty-seven thousand dollars higher, so it's on, it's on target. Tomorrow, we're actually going to receive our second-half advance for this half of the fiscal year, and then in March, I think we'll get our settlement, so we could see how we really compare to our forecast. Other revenues, overall, a hundred fifty-three thousand, so it's, so it's kind of trending on point to the five-year forecast, slightly higher, so trending in the right direction compared to the forecast. Revenues by categories, property taxes, you can see it's right in line to where it was last year. State foundation, slightly higher, but that was due to the TPP reimbursement, where they took it away and then gave it to us back as a reimbursement last year, and they split it, they split last year's payment up, gave us eighty percent last fiscal year, and that other twenty percent came in this fiscal year, so that's where it's kind of skewed a little bit. And then property tax allocation, you can see that's decreasing due to the TPP phase-out. Then other revenues is kind of on target compared to the last three Januaries. Our general fund expenditures. The annual budget that was adopted by the board in October was seventy-two point two million for the general fund, with carryover encumbrance about a million, so resulted in a seventy-three point one million dollar appropriation. Today, we have appropriated fifty-six point, fifty-six point five percent of that amount. Statistical spending range, based on two analysis, first time tests, so seven months of the year have passed, were fifty-eight point thirty-three percent. And secondly, fourteen of twenty-four payrolls have passed, which again is fifty-eight point thirty-three percent. So the fifty-six percent that's been spent encumbered is slightly below the target where we should be. So we're trending slightly under budget. And expenditures through January 31st, the chart on the left shows percent encumbered and expended compared to the last two fiscal years. The black, the black line is our target, our benchmark of fifty-eight point thirty-three. You can see our salaries and benefits are right at that target. And then the rest kind of vary based on the time of need of when the expenditure occurs. And the yellow line is the three-year average for those, for those groups. The chart on the right is the expenditures by category through January 31st, and as you can see, they're mostly, mostly compared to the past two years, it's on target. Salaries are slightly less this year compared to the previous two years, but that number will catch up due to the, due to payroll lag. And then last year, general fund cash balance. We started the year with a general fund cash balance of thirty-eight point, or eighteen point four million. Brought, so to date through January, brought in thirty-nine point one million in revenue, expended thirty-eight point three million. So right now, we have revenues over expenditures of eight hundred thousand, the ending cash balance of nineteen point two million, and you can see the chart on the left. The trend, the trend is, our cash balance trend is similar to the previous two years, but our cash balance is slightly higher compared to the previous two years. And then the black line going across the chart, in our 2020 plan, we identified a cash benchmark of having sixty day, of carrying sixty days operating cash in reserve, which would be eleven, eleven million. So right now, with our cash reserve of, with our, not cash reserve, but our ending cash balance of nineteen point two million, we're above our sixty-day reserve.
It's a nice-looking chart.
Thank you.
I mean, just, I mean, it's very, very well done, but it shows some progress, right? So it shows that every year at this point, the last three years, we've had a higher ending cash balance in the month of June.
We did, we did, and, and that goes back to the beginning of, where we've been financially prudent, where throughout the years, how we've made the adjustments based on looking for efficiencies. Now, we're going to rely on that cash balance to get us through a few years based on the governor's budget that we'll touch on at the, at the end. Before the governor's budget, moving on to the, so I wanted to go over the annual audit. For me, this is kind of exciting and maybe boring for the non-accountants out there, but, so this year in January, we completed our, fiscal year 2016 audit, it was released by the Audit of the State's Office, January 19th. As mentioned, the audit was performed at Audit's office, and overall, we had a clean audit, we received the unqualified opinion, and that's the best opinion that you can get. This is the first year that we've put our audit report in a comprehensive annual financial report. It's called a CAFR. I have one at your desk and for the public. It's available on our district's website under the Treasurers Department. What's different, what this report's different from our previous report, our previous report was a general purpose financial statements, and what those were, were basic. So this is broken down into three sections, an introductory, where we get to talk about the district, all the academic things that we've done, and financial, and also talks about the city. And then it goes into the financial section, and that's where the general purpose statements started last year, and they ended at the notes section, which, which ended on page sixty-four. So previously, this would have been our financial report of the entire, of the entire report now, and then behind it, there's more information on the financial section where, where it goes into more detail on the individual funds that we have. So the report I just gave was on, about the general fund, but we have a lot of other funds, such as the construction fund, our food service fund, our grant fund, so it goes into more detail about those funds, more transparent, where before, it just rolled everything up into one. And then behind the financial section, there's a statistical section, and the statistical section has various different information, from financial trends to revenues, debt capacity, the city demographic, economic information, operating information, a few, a few other things that we can put in at the end. So it gives ten-year data worth there, which, which anyone can pick up and kind of see the ten-year history on certain, certain information. And then also with the CAFR, we're able to submit it to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers, Finance Officers Association, for their certificate achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials, for their certificate of excellence in financial reporting. So, yeah, I think it goes under financial prudence, where one, we'll be more transparent, and then also, we're taking our reporting to the highest level to be more transparent to all our stakeholders.
George, that's, I mean, this, this CAFR is something that we talked about for a lot of years, and we never had it, and we finally do. I think, one, congratulations on the clean audit report, just shows what a fine job you and Rob are doing, and the rest of the staff are doing an incredible job. But also, when we go into this kind of detail, and the other, the budget document that you prepared, that, that book that I kept on my mantle for a while till my wife, made me take it down at Christmas time, but I had it up there for a while. And, I mean, just, when you get this, to this level of detail, and this level of scrutiny, it's transparent for the public, but it's also a very, you know, it's analytic, so you see patterns, you see areas for improvement, you see all, and until you break down their financials into this level of detail, a lot of stuff gets washed out, and you don't really see the trends, you don't really see the opportunities for improvement, and, or the potential risks down the road, or it just helps in, in every aspect. So I commend you for this, for this document, and not, and the work that went into it, but also just, I mean, our goal of financial prudence, without this level of scrutiny, you know, sometimes you're shooting from the hip. And in the past, I felt at times we were shooting from the hip. So, you know, I would, you know, all of us would do a whole bunch of work all the time, like analyzing the numbers. I don't feel that's necessary anymore. Not that we don't have to do our work, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you are meeting a need that's incredible, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I know the whole board feels incredibly comfortable with the work you're doing, and we just want to thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right then, there's no other questions on this. Move on to the governor's state budget proposal for fiscal years 2018 and 19. So I know it's been in the news the past couple weeks, and there's been other stuff tied to it too, but I'm just going to talk about the financial impact. Overall, the education budget at the state level has increased by one percent, or two hundred million. The framework of the current funding formula remains unchanged, as the funding, the formula components are the same, and for the most part, the calculations are the same, with the exception of the guarantee, of the guarantee. The way the formula's set up, there's schools that are on the formula, schools that are capped, and schools that are on a guarantee. For us, we're on a guarantee, meaning that our state funds stayed, would stay the same from year to, year to year, where we've been held harmless. What they're doing is they're drop, the guarantee's going to drop by five percent over the, depending on enrollment trend, from 2011 to 2016. So if enrollment dropped by more than five percent in that period, your guarantee percentage would drop on a sliding scale by one percent, one percent for each percent above the five percent. So if you had an enrollment decrease at five percent, you wouldn't see a, you wouldn't see a change. If you had an enrollment drop a six percent, you would see a one percent decrease. So I just had some examples. It was a little confusing at first, but for example, if a district lost eight percent, they would have, their guarantee would be ninety-seven percent guaranteed. If the district lost twenty percent, their guarantee level would be at ninety-five percent from the previous year. And for us, for Strongton City Schools, we, during that time period of 2011, 2016, we had a twenty percent decline in enrollment. So for us, the impact's going to be a five percent decrease in our guarantee. And then the other component of the state budget is, in his last state budget, the TPP phased out, there was a phased-out schedule, and right now, that remains the same as current legislation. There was a push of, of eliminating that phase-out to hopefully bring the TPP back, or, or some sort of funding to replace it, and as of now, there hasn't been, and it's being continued to phase out. So dollars-wise, how does that impact us? You can see, so what I did was create a chart, for the first one, fiscal year 2016, that was the last fiscal year, that shows us at a hundred percent for the funding formula and TPP. So the funding formula, we had nine point two million dollars, what we received from the state, and the TPP, we received three point six million. So overall, we were receiving twelve point eight million dollars in, in state funding. For this school year, the TPP was being phased out of six hundred thousand. So our state, our funding formula stayed the same, we received the nine point two million, but we had a six hundred thousand dollar decrease in TPP funding, where we received three point, three million, so total state funding of twelve point two million. For next year, under this proposal, our guarantee would decrease by five percent, which would represent, which would represent four hundred fifty-five thousand, or half a million dollars, and the total three point six million would go away for TPP. So we would lose four point one million in state funding, and in comparison, that's thirty-two percent of our state funding that would, would go away. So the first few slides, where I wanted to talk about in the beginning, our financial prudence, over the years where we did have a twenty percent enrollment decline, but you could also see that since that same time period, we have two hundred less positions, which is a twenty-three percent decrease in salary, so we were keeping up with the declining enrollment pace as well. We're looking for efficiencies, and we've done other cost-saving measures just to, to get where we were to balance our books, and now to take- And now, to take, to absorb another hit like this, it's, it's, it's gonna be hard to, we're able to absorb it based on, for, at least for a couple of years, based on the cash balance that we had in the reserve, where we're gonna have to dig into that, because now, with this loss, we're gonna start spending more than we're bringing in. So, that cash reserve, that, that chart that we had, our cash reserve's gonna start eating into the next couple of years. But, because of these decreases at the state level, right now, we're not gonna be able to move forward with anything new, it's just continuing the, our current expenditure level, per se. So.
Do you, do you have my slide?
I do, I have it.
Okay, one, go ahead.
Before.
So, I've got a comment to make.
Let's, let's do those comments before we get to, to Duke's slide.
As many of you guys know, I'm a Strongsville Rotarian, and, and we had a very interesting speaker last Friday. Mr. Gallagher brought in, our county rep, brought in our county exec, and told us a little story about Columbus, which I found was quite interesting. The state of Ohio had a hole, they had a budget number that they had to come up with. And so, the state of Ohio went to the federal government and said, "We need X amount of dollars." It's called thirty million dollars. So, the federal government gave the state of Ohio that amount of money. But, the state of Ohio came to Calga County and said, "You've got a thirteen million dollar hole, figure it out." So, the state of Ohio is doing a really good job in Columbus of covering their expenses and covering their issues, but they can look at Calga County, they can look at Strongsville, and say, "Now, you have an issue. We're taking money from you, even though we, as taxpayers, pay more money into the till than surrounding communities, and you've got a problem, figure it out." So, we reduce our buildings, we work on cost-saving measures, we save millions of dollars internally. Through retirements, we don't increase salaries, right? We eliminate liabilities with older buildings, we save millions of dollars, and how pathetic, and I mean pathetic, is it that Columbus is telling us as a district, "Thank you for doing a good job, thank you for running your district as a, as a business, but we're taking four point one million dollars away from your kids." Four point one million dollars. It's shameful. Go to the other districts, look at this building, for instance. School funding is in two parts, as far as the equation of funding, the everyday operations and the brick and mortar. The taxpayers of Strongsville paid for this building, every nickel, every dime. You go to other districts, and they get reimbursed ninety percent for their buildings? Ninety percent? And then, you come to everyday funding. I'm, I apologize, I think all of you guys know, this is something that gets me hot. 'Cause if you're gonna take money away from us, come to me face to face, come to a board meeting, stand up at that podium, and justify your argument. The only justification that they had, Strongsville taxpayers can pay more taxes. That's exactly what was said. Shameful. Thank you.
If, if you could go back to the expenditure page of your document. This one, the detail one. There it is, okay. So, if you look at that page, first of all, this is the second time the states come back and said, "Well, you've got reduced enrollment, so we're cutting your funding." That's what they said with the TPP, that's exactly what Kasich's, you know, Kasich doesn't support our, our president, he doesn't support this school district. So, this is the second time he's come back, they've come back with the exact same argument and cut us again. First time was the three point six million dollars, and now, it's another four to five hundred thousand dollars that's coming out of our, for the same thing. We've done, if you take a look at, I mean, there's a thing, okay, your enrollment's down, so therefore, you know, ratably, your expenses should be down, but there's a lot of fixed costs involved in this process. You've got an administrative staff, you've got special needs education, unfunded mandates, all those things that go in there. If you look at the major lines of that, the salaries, our, our enrollment's down twenty percent, our, our teacher population is down twenty-three percent. You look at our benefits number, we went self, we went self-funded on that next line. That saved us millions of dollars on that line. You go to the, you know, the, the next line, purchase services, what's in there? Natural gas, electricity. We took out our electric buildings, we took out seven buildings out of our footprint. We, we've done everything we can do to automate and reduce those costs. So, once you get past that, there's nothing left. You'll get supplies and materials, we manage that from year to year, there's not a big number in there. But, we looked at our three biggest expenses, and we said, "Okay, we're gonna, we have to keep this in line with our enrollment." And still, still, they come back and cut our funding even more than that. So, it's unacceptable, we're gonna continue to work at it, we can't spend more than we take in, so we've gotta come up with that answer. You know, we, fortunately, we've built up a cash balance, you know, five years ago, three years ago, we were borrowing money to make payroll. Now, we've built up, we were sitting on a nineteen, you know, nineteen million dollar balance, but once you take that three or four million dollars away, you know, it compounds, and it gets eaten up quick, and I'm sure that's what your, one of your slides is gonna show. But, we will continue to work at it, we'll continue to be challenged by it, and we'll, we'll figure something out.
Can we see my slide now?
Yes, we can.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Duke.
Okay. All right, well, not to add, I would say to George, flame on, if you're not about this, and to Carl, and to Richard, and to Jane, we all feel the same about this. We've had it with Columbus. We've sent an awful lot of money down there, and we don't see a lot of it come back. And we need the help of our city council, our mayor, and our citizens. Here are the new representatives for Strongsville. Let them know, I would encourage everybody to get their numbers and their email addresses, and we'll put this slide up at every board meeting, so that you can write and let these people know what you think of their, excuse me, halfway, I actually wanna use a different word, but halfway plans. Now, when you look at it, and under the plan is, as outlined right now, and I realize it's gonna go through a lot of iterations within the legislature, but as the governor outlined the plan, North Royalton gets more money, and we lose, and what I saw, George, closer to eight hundred thousand dollars additional. It's ridiculous, and it's up to our citizens, and up to us, to let them know in Columbus that this will not do, that we will not tolerate this, and that we expect, you know, everything costs more. Buses cost more, fuel costs more, electricity costs more, everything costs more than it did a couple of years ago, and yet, Columbus still sees fit, this governor sees fit, to take money from districts that are quote-unquote wealthy, and give it, and throw money at other districts that makes no difference in their graduation rates, it makes no difference in their performance. They don't have a Cameron Reiba and Company trying to produce a premier school district, and they give, their cost per student is up around thirteen thousand dollars a year per kid, ours is down around eight. And like has been said, we've taken every prudent measure that a board and an administration can take to contain our expenses. So, we just need to speak up, we need to tell Columbus, "Ah, this ain't gonna hack it, send us the money that we deserve, and that we've earned, and that our kids have earned, and we need your help."
Thank you, George.
So, I got a few more items.
Scott, did you get the, that on the thing? Okay.
The next item, item B, Student Activity Program Purpose Goals, Proposed Budget Revisions for Fiscal Year Two Seventeen, those can be found in Exhibit B. Two changes, one is the Middle School Fund Eighteen, bringing their cash lev, bringing their budget up to cash levels and anticipated revenue, and same thing with Kinsler Elementary, their student council, is they're anticipating some fundraisers, so bringing up their budget to the anticipated revenue cash levels. Item C, Petty Cash Fund for the Strongsville Early Learning Preschool, every other building in our district has a petty cash account except for the preschool, and there's been some times where they needed to have cash on hand. And the Secretary, Marie Palanca, will be named the trustee. And then, item D, Exhibit C, is amended appropriations, and it's just adjusting for the two items that were in item B. So, if there's no questions, that concludes my report.
I do have one comment. I'd like you to take a look at the middle school, and their events now are so large. So, when they have a, the Dare Dance, right, it used to be at the rec center, and it wasn't nearly as, as big. Now, with all the energy that goes on in the middle school, the, my understanding, the cash collections at the, for the Dare Dance, were almost eight thousand dollars at, at the last dance, right? So, that's a lot of money. And I just want to make sure that, one, we have the proper staff, the proper people who handle that kind of cash, the proper internal controls around that kind of cash, and to make sure that it's, you know, that's, that's a big gate. And, you know, the, you know, they're talking about what they're gonna do with the money, which is great, we can do all that, but I just want to make sure that we're prepared, that, you know, it, it's a, it's a different game over there now, right? They, they generate, their, their fundraisers are generating, you know, a lot of money. And to have, you know, volunteers, I know they get a stipend for some of the stuff they volunteer for, but that's a big responsibility and a big, you know, it's, it's risk, right? To me, it's financial risk to have that money at the gate, and have people handling it who may not be, just make sure everybody's prepared, and they know what to do, and how to handle it, and how it gets deposited, how it gets reconciled. I don't want any questions or anything like that to ever come up, because we didn't prepare them properly.
It's also a risk to be carrying that kind of money around as well, so what are the plans for that?
I think those honor guard guys each had a gun, and we go, walk it in, they walk it out.
Yeah, there should be a, a safe in the office where it's
Yeah, we need to think about that.
Maintained overnight and then deposited the next business day. And then, also, it, for the middle school, it has been a learning experience this year for them.
Oh, yeah.
Their first fundraiser, the cookie dough for the band, that, that blew away expectations, and then, the same thing with the dance, I think they got more kids than they anticipated. So, we've been working with, with the secretary. I think there was one day when Dawn even went out and, and helped Diane, Dawn and Rob went out to help with the cash.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't set them up to have a problem, that's all.
And that concludes my report, if there's nothing else.
Back to you, Cameron.
All right, a couple of updates, put a few slides together, just so, 'cause there's a lot of detailed information. As we talked about, full day kindergarten, we had a successful meeting, kindergarten information meeting and full day kindergarten intent acceptance a few weeks ago, but kindergarten registration is coming up here in next month. So, three things that our families that have kindergarten students need to do, first of all, they need to go to their home building and pick up a registration packet. Secondly, the registration packet will have information, but they get on our website, they can preregister, and they need to preregister prior to their assigned date through our new InfoSnap, through Power School, that they can get on, on the website. And then, they need to show up between eight to noon on the dates listed, it's gonna be the week of March thirteenth, each of the elementary schools, and again, all registration is at the administrative offices on Cook Avenue, not at the individual building. So, this will be whether our families put in their intent for full day kindergarten or not, all families, other than our current preschool students that are transitioning to the kindergarten, need to come and register their children to officially get their spot for next year.
I think that those lists of dates are discriminatory against our Irish families who have to pick up their packets on St. Patrick's Day.
Anyways.
It's eight to noon, right?
It's only one school.
Can you give us any kind of indication on enrollment for kindergarten?
Full day kindergarten, I believe we're at a hundred and seventy-two.
Wow.
A hundred and seventy students have, we, we are taking intent forms, but we've stopped taking deposits. So, what happens now is if we, we'll see how many more kids, if we open up an eighth section, but we have officially started the waitlist for full day kindergarten, half-day kindergarten, we will not know until after the week of March thirteenth. Then, we'll be able to see those numbers.
And if people do not know what their home school is, the map is still on the website that they can figure that out.
Correct. There's, thank you, on the right-hand side of the website, it'll say enroll kindergarten on that page, you could type in your street name, and it'll let you know what school you go to.
Great, thank you.
Great reminder, thank you. The other part that we're just starting to communicate, and Aaron and Dan are gonna be getting this out everywhere we can, is remember, based on board policy, we changed our entrance requirement to, you had to turn five on or before August first. There has always been an option, and it may be exercised a little more this year because of that change from September thirtieth to August first, but of early entrance testing. So, as this says, children that turn five after August first but before or on December thirty-first, they can participate in early entrance testing, it is a requirement, and the testing is held in April and May, but they have to call and register. And Aaron, there's a deadline to register, right?
Prior to the testing.
Prior to the testing. So, by the end of March, we're asking all people to register for testing, testing will take place in April and May. If you miss that testing window, we do not go back and retest. So, that is something crucial, we'll have it on all of our websites, get it out in all of our newsletters, I'm sure we'll have it in the post here coming up, but that, this will be early entrance testing.
And that's at the administration building.
Administrative offices, actually by appointment, so once you call and register, the psychologist will call and set up a time, and based on those test results, determine whether or not a child will be admitted to kindergarten prior, based on the early entrance requirement. Okay. Just an update, we do have a community conversations coming up next Wednesday, Aaron and I will be at the rec center right by the Spirit Shop, and it's all things curriculum. So, she's done a great job in the past years of getting our curriculum up to date and up to speed, we're working on writing and English Language Arts, as we talked about, but five thirty to seven thirty, Aaron and I will be there to talk with our community, and with a focus this month on curriculum. Just another reminder, we've got Love and Logic, which is a program, Don Berkey, who's a former guidance counselor in our middle schools, is presenting March fifteenth. Love and Logic is a parenting program, this is a free program we're putting on for our community, based on the recommendation of our guidance department and the financial support of our Strongsville civic team. There's three sessions there, March fifteenth is the first one, they're all at the Strongsville Middle School from seven to eight. So, if you're, any of those topics speak to you as a parent, that you're looking for some advice, some support, some, some discussion about how, you know, how to do your job better as a parent, I know we can all use a little advice in that arena at times, especially as our kids get older. The one note on there is, I believe, the dates are switched, they switched the order, so the topic for April twelfth is now the twenty-sixth, and vice versa. So, we're excited to, to bring that as an option to our parents and our community. And then, finally, some upcoming events. George, you wanna give a little plug for the Chili Open?
Yes, the Chili Open will be at the Calga County Fairgrounds. It'll be February twenty-fifth, from nine AM to four PM. If you wanna golf, my suggestion is just bring a pitching wedge, it may be muddy, it may be snowy, we never, not sure what we're gonna get, but it's a great deal of fun. There's plenty of food between chili and everything else, and then, there's auction items. We are still collecting, Ken, are we still collecting auction items?
All day long.
All day long. And, and please keep in mind, the amount of money that we raised from the Chili Open all goes back to charities. We have charities that apply each year, it's a big, huge fundraiser for us, and Rotary is all about giving back, so please come, hopefully, we'll see some administrators there, I will be there, so pitching wedge in hand. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Also, so you go to the Chili Open in the morning, go to the afternoon, back to the high school, we have Lattes with the Lantern, the Lantern is our high school newspaper, it's a nice little afternoon, you get some coffee, some hot chocolate, they have some activities, the prices are up there, and what this does is it helps the students provide print copies of the Lantern, so the money goes right back to the group to ensure they can make print copies of the great newspaper they produce for the students at the high school. And then, lastly, March twelfth, the Athletic Booster, I think this is their second annual Flapjack Breakfast, so go out to Strongsville Avocable Bees, get your tickets for ten dollars, have breakfast, and have some great fellowship with the Athletic Boosters, and again, that will be the March twelfth at eight AM to ten AM, and I know Dan will have that again, it's, it's in our weekly update that goes out, so if you're a, a parent, you can get more information in our weekly update, that will be coming out tomorrow. I think that ends my timely information, unless there's questions on that.
Isn't there a Strong, isn't there a wingding for the high school this weekend?
High school.
For the high school.
PTA.
High school PTA? Slime Chubbies at six o'clock or so, five thirty?
Mary, she tells me where to go.
I know, too.
Six thirty to nine.
Six thirty, is that legal?
You can eat your way through the next few weeks, supporting our various groups. Moving on, then, for business services, we do have two items for your consideration. The first is, is approving participation in the Ohio Schools Council bidding and purchasing program for buses, and this would authorize the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and accept bids on the board's behalf. Uh, and this would authorize the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and accept bids on the board's behalf, uh, per the specs submitted to purchase five seventy-two passenger conventional school buses for the district. And that needs a separate vote.
So moved.
Second.
George, take roll. Mr. Grozent?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Uh, we do have two gifts, uh, Scott and Cheryl Schneider donated two weighted vests valued at a hundred and fifty dollars to Chapman Elementary School for use with special education students. And Judy Grecago donated a beanbag chair valued at thirty-seven dollars ninety-nine cents to Chapman Elementary School. And that concludes business services unless there's questions on that report. All right, curriculum, Erin, uh, you can come and give your report for the month.
Good evening. Under curriculum, we have three items tonight. Um, the first one is a recommendation for the Strongsville High School Program of Studies for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year to be approved. Second item is for the Strongsville Middle School Curriculum Guide, again, for the seventeen eighteen school year to be approved. And our third item is for an overnight trip for the Strongsville DECA, um, for the nights of March seventeenth through the eighteenth. And these are for those students who qualified for the state tournament. Um, again, wanted to recognize our DECA program and the advisor Jessica Frenchick, um, who have done a phenomenal job. We have seventy-six students that qualified to attend the state tournament. And that's out of about four hundred across the state. Any questions with those three items? Thank you.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next, uh, Director of Special Education, Andy Trujillo with his report.
Good evening. Uh, one can, one item for consideration in student services is a settlement resolution. Seen an exhibit D. Since there's only one item, do you have any questions about our department while I'm here?
How's it going?
Just fine, just fine, thanks. Yeah, just a couple of things, um, ODE is coming back May sixteenth as part of the, um, systemic review or systematic review that they do of our department. That's to come back and look at records to see if we're doing correctly what they said to do. And so they'll come back and pull records randomly and see, and see how that process is going. Also, we're implementing Power School as part of our software solution for next year. And so we have standing meetings with them every week, um, with our team and their implementation team. And so we're, we're talking to them at least once, uh, maybe sometimes twice a week in preparation for that. And we'll start training in March for that.
Excellent. Are you ready for the ODE?
We're ready.
You're ready?
Yeah.
All right, I know you are.
Andy, what specifically are you gonna be implementing with the Power School?
That is currently, um, every district has an IEP and ETR writing system. Yeah, we currently have IEP anywhere, we're gonna move to a Power School solution. All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, do we have a motion for the settlement? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? We've all ready? Uh, vote? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Mr. Grozent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next, under human resources, uh, we have a appointment of non-certificated, uh, staff, um, as well as appointment of certificated, uh, substitutes and non-certificated substitutes on page ten. Uh, on page eleven, there's appointment of a certificated tutor. Uh, under two, we do have a correction of, uh, of a rate for one of our cafeteria employees. Uh, under three, we have changes in hours for non-certificated staff. These are bus drivers that had, uh, student changing on their route, which included, which increased their route time. So that's the reason for the change there. Uh, we have changes in status of non-certificated staff. So these are folks in the last month that have got a new job, uh, within the district. On page twelve, under E-five, uh, continuing contract recommendations for some of our non-certificated staff. And under E-six, we have, uh, medical leaves for administrative certified and non-certificated staff, as well as unpaid medical leave for non-certificated staff. On page thirteen, we have a series of volunteers, um, that have been background checked and, uh, are able to volunteer a chaperone for the next five years in our district. Uh, and we do have, uh, one employee, uh, that, uh, is recommended for dismissal, uh, based on, um, their performance during their probationary period with us. And that concludes, uh, the human resource report unless there's questions.
I just wanted to comment that we've got, we got some really good feedback this week. Uh, the board received a letter, I think you received it as well.
I did, yeah.
On our, our new chef and how well he's doing and how, uh, what a change. So that was really good to get.
He's doing a phenomenal job, absolutely. It was good to hear from the staff that they're seeing the same things we are. And then finally, uh, Director of Instructional Technology, Vicki Turner, has an update about an exciting opportunity that's coming to Strongsville. Vicki?
Good evening. Uh, I came back this evening from, uh, O-Tech, which is the Ohio Educational Technology Conference, and it's a two-day conference, and there were thirteen of us from the district there. Uh, and we often lament that those of us from the Cleveland area don't have our own big tech conference. So this flyer you see in front of you is our first annual tech conference that we hope will rival what goes on in Columbus every year. We are very excited. Kevin Honeycutt is a renowned speaker. And we are working with the ESC and some other school districts like Orange and Royleton Independence. There's a planning team, we've been planning for months. Uh, and I am happy to say that Strongsville, uh, is going to host at the middle school. And I think that, uh, that is mostly because, once they saw the pictures of the middle school and then they came and took a tour of the middle school, um, and everybody wanted it to be there. I've also been working with Chef Mike, so he will be providing the food, breakfast and lunch for both days. Um, and we encourage all of you board members, Cameron's going to probably present a session. A lot of our administrators and teachers will be presenting, uh, and we encourage you to stop in any time during those two days and check out this, um, what we hope will be a really big conference for us.
Vicki, what's the date again?
It's June thirteenth and fourteenth.
Okay, just on camera one more time.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope. We'll see you there. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank Vicki because the reason it's here is because of Vicki. I know she didn't wanna say that. But, you know, one of the things, Vicki's very talented in many areas, but one of the things she really does well is network and, um, shine and highlight what we're doing in Strongsville and collaborate with her colleagues across the region and state. And so, you know, these are the opportunities before Vicki took on that role that would've passed us by. But because she's here, that, that's why they're here. Um, and, uh, so we're very proud of what she's done and she's too humble to say it. But, uh, you know, I heard Kevin Honeycutt speak a few years ago when I was a high school principal, um, and the excitement that I had going back to talk to, my teachers were probably annoyed because I was like, you gotta check this out, look at this, this is awesome, we can do this. Uh, but if anybody in the area is around, he's worth, uh, coming to see. He just is truly, changes the way you think about how you can provide education to students, so excited to have him here.
It's very mysterious.
Makes you wanna come see what he's all about.
Okay, maybe that's it.
Um, and with that, that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Nasa?
Thank you. Um, that brings us to, uh, the report on Polaris.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I just wanted to highlight that in addition to Valentine's Day, February is National Career and Technical Education Month. And so, uh, a couple of highlights about Polaris. Um, currently, we have, uh, over eight thousand adult students who attend Polaris every year. Over, uh, eight hundred eighty stu- high school students attend the Polaris campus. And then nearly two thousand nine hundred high school and middle school students, uh, have Polaris programs in their home districts. Uh, for example, at the middle school, we have our, uh, uh, pre-engineering program. Along with at the high school, we have a pre-engineering program. So, um, if you forgot Valentine's Day with your sweetheart, you can still, you still have time to celebrate Career and Technical Education Month. Couple of shout-outs that I'm always happy to talk about, uh, the Polaris, uh, business, uh, Business Professionals of America program, uh, had their competition recently. And we had a number of students from, uh, Strongsville who, uh, did well. So I wanted to, uh, recognize Alex Antonopoulos, who's a junior at Strongsville. He was the second place, uh, finisher in payroll accounting.
You guys related to him or?
He's a good Greek boy, come on. And then, uh, Bakar El-Halabi, a S- uh, Strongsville senior, finished third in payroll accounting. Calvin Renaud, a, also a senior, finished first in human resource management. Jada Moore, uh, was, uh, third in advanced word processing and then second in advanced office systems and procedures. Jared Hader was first in intermediate word processing and third in fundamental spreadsheet applications. And Kadar Sasu is a senior and he was second in entrepreneurship. This was the regional competition and, uh, this means that those students from Strongsville will go on to, uh, compete in the state competitions. We're always, uh, always very excited and proud of them for their accomplishments. On March twenty-ninth, uh, Polaris will hold the tenth annual, uh, Polaris West Shore Career Fair. It'll be Wednesday, March twenty-ninth from nine AM to noon. It is a free, uh, career fair. Uh, so if you are, uh, interested in, uh, some of the various employers in our area, whether it be a Criterion Tool and Die, a lot of the healthcare, uh, related companies will be there. It's a great, uh, event. That is March twenty-ninth. And then the last, uh, shout-out for Polaris is we had, and as soon as I find his name, there he is. Uh, Richard Brunner, uh, who is a senior at Strongsville High School, along with, uh, his, uh, classmate Travis, who wa- goes to another high school that we won't mention, uh, Brooklyn High School. Uh, they recently qualified to gra- uh, to compete in the twenty-fifth annual Greater Cleveland Automotive Technology Competition at the two thousand seventeen Cleveland Auto Show. That's gonna occur on Sunday, February twenty-sixth. And, uh, I think a lot of these competitions are taking, uh, some lessons from the different TV shows. So you're gonna get in there and you're not gonna know what, uh, what you're gonna be presented with and you're gonna have to diagnose the, the problem with the car and fix it and so on. Um, but to, to be, uh, invited to this competition, uh, both students completed a two-hundred question exam and they placed in the top five of all the students who took the exam in northeast Ohio. So we're also very proud of Richard. And, uh, we wish both of them good luck on Sunday, February twenty-sixth. That completes my Polaris report.
I'm excited about the Polaris reports this year because they're very special. Because this year, we'll be getting all of our Polaris reports from the president of the Polaris School Board. So congratulations, Richard on being elected. For all your hard work.
I appreciate that. Um, and I, you know, I will give a shout-out. We are in the middle of, uh, selecting a construction manager for our Polaris, uh, building projects. It feels like it's deja vu all over again, 'cause, uh, it seems like we just did that, uh, not that long ago in Strongsville.
Leave George alone, will you?
I've already called them and I've already asked about advice, so I appreciate that.
Good to go. Wanna go right into legislation?
I do, and I'm gonna let Duke know that he stole some of my thunder, but that's okay 'cause I think we need, uh, mention this a lot. Um, so as we discussed, uh, the big thing in, as far as a legislative report is the education or is the budget and what it, what it could do to education in Strongsville. And, uh, some of the, some of the numbers that I, I think are important for us in Strongsville to know is, is the comparisons. So as we have already discussed, Strongsville, uh, next year would, could potentially lose four hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. And over two years, that's close to, to a million dollars out of our budget. Um, at the same time, North Olmsted would got, would, uh, increase the amount they receive from the state by six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, Warrensville Heights, six hundred thirty-two thousand dollar increase. Parma, three million, three hundred nine thousand dollar increase. So I don't, I have nothing against Parma, I have nothing against North Olmsted and I have nothing against, uh, uh, Warrensville Heights. The discrepancies are large and it's very difficult, uh, to explain them in a, in a common sense way that I think as taxpayers, we're entitled, uh, to have. That the, uh, that the tax money that we send to Columbus and the way it comes back to our communities needs to be, have, have a reasonableness, needs to be something that everyone can understand. And when you have the city of Cleveland in the governor's budget having an increase of nineteen million dollars and we're going to lose four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, um, it leaves you wondering why. And when the state budget director Keen says that cities with the capacity to pay more, should pay more, that's a nice way of saying, go where the money is, 'cause that's where the, where it is. Um, and it's, it's unacceptable.
You got North Royleton there too?
Yes, I have all, all of Cuyahoga County. Uh, North Royleton, I think you're thinking North Ridgeville Duke, 'cause North Royleton loses five thousand dollars. So maybe North Royton.
So Parma's, so Parma's superintendent and their treasurer resigned because there's a missing millions of dollars and they get more. We run ours as a tight ship, we bring in one of the best treasures in the state. We know where every penny goes and we get hurt.
The interesting thing is
Put my slide back up.
That makes a lot of logical sense, right?
Well, the interesting thing is that the total budget went up. So I get, okay, if you're gonna put more money in education, I get that. Just like the last time they put the screws to us. And the total budget goes up, you can easily hold, you can hold all the districts even. You don't have to take money from anybody and then you can funnel that extra money to your favorite school districts or to your friends or however it works with Mr. Kasek, I don't know. But y- you could easily do that and hold the rest of us harmless. That seems to be an acceptable solution, 'cause we'll take care of ourselves. Just quit, just quit eating our lunch here, you know, I mean, quit dipping into our bowl here. And, uh, you know, so we, we gotta work this through. And I think it's gonna take everybody, I don't mean to, but, you know, Richard's got some numbers for us to call and some other things to talk about. But, I mean, one, that, that seems like common sense. They keep us even, give more to the other districts if that's what you wanna do. I guarantee you, it won't equate the results, but.
The one thing I was gonna suggest is the, uh, the government's, the governor's budget, one of the things it has as a theme is, uh, applying business principles and about, uh, making it more, uh, business oriented. So for all of our teachers out there, they probably already know about this, but in their license renewal, as a requirement to renew their education license, they need to do an internship with a local business person. Um, so, uh, which again, the ideas all sound good on paper, but in practicality, I don't know how effective they are. The, uh, the other thing in the budget that gets boards, uh, all worked up is that the superintendent is going to pick three business people from the community and make them members of the board, uh, in addition to the five that the community have already voted on. So I found it amusing that, uh, we hire Cameron and then Cameron's gonna hire, uh, three other people to sit on the board with us, but, um, bygones. Uh, but, you know, a lot of these things
Do they get to vote?
Oh, yeah.
No.
No, they don't get voting, right?
They're ex officio, they're, uh, yeah, they don't get to vote, but they, um, they're there.
I was just thinking, how could we have more board members, that's what I was
Hey, that's what you were thinking.
The irony is, is that, you know, again, the idea is to get more business, 'cause if we got more business mindset into school districts, school districts would work better. And then you have a city like Strongsville, which I think we all do have a very much of a business mindset and it feels, uh, in many ways that we're being punished. Um, so that's all fine and good, but it is a bit of a dance and it's the governor's, uh, volley and he's done this volley before. Um, it is particularly offensive that they're going to, after, after the TPP decision where Strongsville loses three million dollars, that's not enough. There, you know, the idea is to allow us to have some time to digest that, but no, we're gonna follow that up with a one million dollar, uh, change. But the dance is, it's now in the, in the hands of the senate and the house at the, at the state level. And so as, as Duke pointed out, that's really where we need voices to be heard. Um, so we already have the phone numbers. The thing that I wanted to add was that, uh, Tom Patton, uh, Representative Tom Patton's email address is repzeroseven@ohiohouse.gov. Um, it annoys me to no end that you go to the Ohio House website and you can't find an email address. You find a form that forces you to keep your message to fifty words or less and it just makes it difficult to contact your, your state rep or your, uh, state senator. But rep zero seven R-E-P zero seven at ohiohouse.gov.
And we'll put our slide up on the website, on the, on the top, on the front page.
And then State Senator Dolan's email address is dolan, D-O-L-A-N, at ohio senate.gov. And the reality is, is they do listen to the responses. They do, they do take heed of the messages they get. I am not a hundred percent confident, but I'm really confident that no one in Parma is gonna send them an email saying, "Thanks for the potential money, leave it alone." But if enough people in Strongsville say this is unacceptable, um, it will have an effect. And that concludes my report. Uh, next month, I'm gonna be back and, uh, we'll have a report on how much Strongsville sends to Columbus in income tax and other taxes, 'cause I think that's relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane, City Council?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Neso. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ken Duner to our meeting this evening. He's the new committee representative on behalf of City Council, so thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. At the last meeting of City Council, it was announced that the city is applying for a grant from the EMS Grant Program, and typically, they apply for this every year, and we receive between $2,000 to $3,500. And the fire department uses this money to purchase things that are outside of their standard budget, like boards to immobilize patients for transport and intubating scopes for patients to help better visualize for the EMS personnel. So that would be a welcome addition to the city. Next, the rec department is preparing for youth baseball and spring basketball leagues right now, so check out the rec center if you would like to participate in those worthy events that take place every year in our city. And then, speaking of Matt Dolan, he sent a letter to the city commending the city on being named one of the top seven safest and peaceful places to live in Cuyahoga County. So that was a nice recognition on behalf of Mr. Dolan, so he's well aware of Strongsville. So I'm sure he'd love to hear from more of us.
That concludes my City Council report.
Thank you, Jane.
Did you want me to go on?
Yeah, please.
PTA, well, as we were told last meeting, was PTA Founder's Day, and it was held at the rec center. And that's a day that PTA Council takes to celebrate the founding of PTA and to recognize members of our community for their service and commitment to the youth of our city. And I'd like to congratulate the following recipients this year. Michelle Fowl, Debbie Shostek, Brad Isarov, Jenny Pelco, Julie Lob, Lillian Longley, Steve Dietrich, and Allison Appleby. So it was a very nice morning and lunch, so congratulations to all of those recipients, and thank you for all your contributions to our children.
Student achievement?
Okay, student achievement. Well, once again, I'd like to thank Dan Faust for being my... He so graciously attends all the schools and takes photos so that we can have a more comprehensive and worthwhile report for the community. This month, we went to the preschool. So they would like to highlight their program. It's called PRIDE. It's the Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program, and PRIDE stands for Prepared, Respectful, Inclusive, Determined, and Engaged. So what they do is, PRIDE is taught through a series of lessons and then recognitions and reinforcements, and there's a big PRIDE wall in the school that shows students and exhibiting the behaviors that they've done to be respectful, be prepared, be inclusive. So I'd like to... That's when they fill their jars with Mustang pride. So every time a student does something that meets one of these targets, they get to fill the little jar. When the jar is filled, then the class receives a reward. So they're finding it to be a very successful program, and those are some of the students that have achieved their pride. So that is our student achievement for the month.
Excellent. Thank you, Jane. I'll go back up to the Strongsville Education Foundation. We had a meeting last week, and I'll remind everybody that the Jockeys and Julips event is coming up. It's a great, it's a fun event. It is always the first Saturday in May, which is the same day as the Kentucky Derby, which makes sense. The meeting they did, they welcomed in three new members to the SEF. We don't have their bios yet, but at the next meeting, I'll read those to everybody. But they're, they've got a really good team now, and they seem really, it's really committed, and they're very dedicated to funding not only our new school trips, excuse me, field trips for the schools, but also the Makerspace. So that's what they're committing to right now, to really help. And I could see Vicki out there shaking her head, she's so excited. But I just wanna thank them for all their help and dedication and hard work for what they do.
And Mr. Neso, if anybody, Dan has worked with the foundation, that their website is actually a part of our website now. So if anybody wants to attend the Jockeys and Julips event, you can order your tickets online, and if you just go onto our website, you could find the Education Foundation and get your tickets there, or find out more information about how to become involved or support the foundation, or to look at the good work they're doing to support our district in the ways you just mentioned.
Excellent. All right. That brings us to the Finance Committee. We did not have a Finance Committee meeting. Policy?
We're so tired from last month, right?
Yeah, you guys are so...
We took a break.
Probably best, probably best.
The new batch has arrived, so don't you worry. We'll be meeting...
You haven't shared yet?
Not yet, not yet.
Facilities Committee meeting?
Our next Facilities Committee meeting is next Thursday, the 23rd, at our admin building, the old Zeller's Elementary. So it's a public meeting. We encourage taxpayers and citizens of Strongsville to come and listen to our meeting, and we'll have, I believe, an enrollment conversation presented by...
February 23rd?
Yep.
Okay.
So next Thursday.
Yeah. I won't be able to attend, so if another board member would like to attend, I won't be able to make that night, so... All right, that brings us to the consent calendar. All items with an asterisk get approved in a single vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? We don't have any changes or modifications to that. So, George, can you take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. That brings us to Board of Education Other. There is one other item that I'll start with. Part of our job is with the, with our district goals, student achievement, financial prudence, community involvement, all of those things. We have, part of our board's job is to ensure that we have the staff and leadership team in place to accomplish those goals. And so with that, we went back as a board, and we reviewed all the contracts that currently are available in the Leadership Handbook, and we, and it was our determination that there are two, two members of our staff who do not, as part of their contract, do not have raises or any increase built into their agreements, and that is our treasurer, George, and our superintendent, Cameron. So with that, we discussed, is that proper, is that the right thing to do? And so we decided the first thing we would do would be a full evaluation of both, both George and Cameron. We did board evaluations and reviewed both, we circulated documents and we talked about it, and we came to the conclusion on both, that they both were doing an outstanding job. And because of that, we felt it was incumbent on us to, one, to reward them for that, for their excellent achievement and their dedication and their service and everything else. And so we decided as a board for the following resolution. So be it resolved that we approve a performance bonus for Cameron, Superintendent of Strongsville Schools, and George Agnassu, Treasurer of our schools. Be it resolved that the school district, the Board of Education approves a performance bonus for Cameron Reiba, Superintendent, in the amount of $4,000 to be paid in a lump sum on February 24th, 2017. Be it further resolved that Strongsville City Schools approve a performance bonus for George Agnassu, Treasurer of our school district, in the amount of $3,000, bonus to be paid in a lump sum on February 24th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just say that, from my perspective, forty years of leadership, that all the good things that happen in any kind of an organization start at the top, or the bad things. We've been very fortunate to have excellent leadership in both the financial and the administrative side of the House, and I would say, I mean, I think I speak for the rest of my peers here, we thank you, both of you.
Thank you. Well, I'll take roll. Nothing wrong. Duke?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your service and your hard work and continued performance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Neso, can I have a Board of Education Other Other? If I could?
Certainly.
I wanna say thanks to Dan Faust, and as Duner's sitting here, as Sergeant in Arms at Rotary, Ken Duner is, Dan puts together my little cheat sheet on a weekly basis. So when I go into Rotary, I'm prepared, so I can tell everybody at Rotary the upcoming events. So we've got some upcoming events coming up at the high school. Dan, is it orchestra concert?
Band, band.
Band concert this weekend?
Next, end of the month.
End of the month, okay. Well, thank God he gives me a cheat sheet, so I can go over that at Rotary. But again, Dan, thank you very much for doing that. I know it's time out of your day, so I appreciate it.
Any Other Other?
I have.
Oh, Richard, Other.
Based on last board meeting, John Borjely, who's from the Optimist Club, thanked us for the shout-out and said he has another opportunity for the community to get involved in the Optimist Club, which turns around and supports our students. They're starting a reverse raffle. It's an interesting reverse raffle. The tickets are $40 each. It's a twelve-month raffle, so you buy one ticket for $40, and every month, they pull out of the raffle. Only 200 tickets are being sold. The drawings are gonna start in March. There'll be four monthly prizes consisting of $100, $75, and two $50 prizes that they'll draw from. And I think the fun part is, is that if your ticket is drawn in a particular month, it goes back in the hopper. So if you're really lucky, you might win more than just one month. So that's, again, $40 for each ticket. It's 12 opportunities throughout the year. Only 200 tickets are being sold, and if you're interested, you can call John at 440-238-2610, or thestrongsvilleoptimistclub.com website has information on the reverse raffle. And then someone told me that the wingding for the PTA is from 5:30 to 8:30 on Saturday at Slim &amp; Chubbies, and I forgot that I'll be...
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you for watching, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. I don't think she's watching. I think she's responded to my text.
I like my version better.
Me, too.
And she reminded me that I'll be selling sideboards, so I need everyone to show up, and I need everyone to buy some sideboards. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Or Other.
I have another, since we're taking turns. I'd like to invite everyone in the community to attend the Historical Society meeting at Old Town Hall on February 28th, and it is our Founder's Day for the Historical Society that we celebrate. And the topic is discussing how all of the buildings came to be in the village and how they were moved from where they are. So it's kind of fascinating, 'cause some people thought, "Oh, they've always been there." No, only two structures are original to that property, so if you're interested, come on out.
Excellent. Any Other Others?
I think we're othered out.
We're othered out. Excellent. Meeting notifications, there will be a special Board of Education meeting this Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Administration Building, and then we have a board meeting coming up on March 2nd, and another one on March 16th. We do have need for executive session this evening.
On three items, to consider the employment of a public employer official, to consider the dismissal of a public employer official, and to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee official, licensee or student.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Enter an executive session at?
8:50.
8:50.
We'll leave at 8:52. We're gonna get through this fast.